Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Tuesday, January 9th, meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is 3:04 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Dinson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Was it here?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
There are seven members present, Mr. Chair.
We have all seven members present. Please join us in listening to the Land Acknowledgement and Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag led by Councilmember Hitchens, followed by a moment of silence. For today's moment of silence, we pause for a solemn moment to remember Jake Carter, a victim of senseless gun violence while on vacation in New Orleans with his family. Jake, alongside his husband and business partner, Daniel Blagovich, embodied the spirit of resilience. Together, they courageously launched Howdy Bagel during the challenges of COVID-19, evolving from a door-to-door and pop-up business to a thriving brick-and-mortar business right here in South Tacoma. Our hearts go out to Daniel and the Howdy Bagel family and all who experienced Jake's boundless kindness. Let us honor his memory by advocating for a future free from such heartbreaking losses and gun violence. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of the Coast Salish tribes. Coast Salish people have lived on and stewarded these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is just one small step towards true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land. I'd like to invite all that can't stand to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flags are in the back, and we have a moment of silence following that in honor of Jake Carter. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are now at Section 4, Approval of Our Agenda. Are there any objections to approving today's agenda as presented? Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. On today's council agenda, there will be multiple opportunities for public comment. On the consent agenda, you may provide comment on any final action item. This does not include items simply placed on the consent agenda for introduction and scheduling. On today's consent agenda, there are three appointment resolutions and three grants for approval, all subject to public comment. During Section 9 of the agenda, we will take public comment on each resolution individually. And finally, under the community forum, there will be an opportunity to address the council on any topic that is not on today's agenda. For more information on the rules of public participation, please review them at the bottom of Page 1 of today's agenda. That does bring us to Section 5, the Consent Agenda. Does any member wish to pull any item from today's consent agenda? Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. I would like to amend the consent agenda, pulling Item 2, let's see, Item C to B, which is a appointment resolution, and moving that to Section 7. And before I conclude that, do we have a Trevor Williams online or in the room? Not seeing that. So yes, I'd like to amend the consent agenda, moving C to B to Section 7, and moving the consent agenda as amended.
It's been properly moved and suggested that we adopt the consent agenda with the exception of moving Items C to B to Section 7 of our agenda. Not seeing any other hands to move any other items. So this is a public hearing on our final action items on our consent agenda. If you wish to provide comment on any final action items, please come to the podium. We'll start here in chambers. Come to the podium, say your name for the record. Not seeing any Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room.
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on the final action items, press the Raytan icon of Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. I see no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Dinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera. Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
A resorted or call vote of seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. There are no messages from the executive, our judges, or prosecuting attorney, which does bring us to proclamations, recognitions, and awards. Our proclamation today remembers the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. for his contributions to the ideals of equality and justice throughout the world. And I'd like to invite Courtney Akoff, District Representative, from the Office of Representative Derek Kilmer, and Janice Lee, Executive Director of the Tacoma Urban League, to the podium. We are joined by Ms. Akoff, and one of the many reasons why Ms. Akoff is with us is because she is the alumni guest speaker at the University of Washington Tacoma Martin Luther King Day Celebration at the UW Tacoma this next Monday. So Ms. Akoff, thank you for joining us. We're so proud of you and your leadership. And please allow me to read this proclamation into the record, and then we're going to invite you to make some remarks.
Thank you.
So this is a proclamation of the Pierce County Council, remembering the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. for his contributions to the ideals of equality and justice throughout the world and right here in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. embodied an American ideal throughout his life by combining deep spirituality with a profound commitment to political action throughout his pursuit of civil rights, showing America that racial injustice and violence should not be tolerated. And whereas in the 61 years since Dr. King's famous "I Have a Dream" speech, our community reflects upon the progress made towards his vision of the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood and further resolve to create a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin but by the content of their character. And whereas Dr. King's uncompromising courage and leadership from the Montgomery Bus Boycott to the Selma Voting Rights Movement and on through the Poor People's Campaign serves as a beacon to inspire us all, and as his final book, Where Do We Go From Here: Chaos or Community, messages, hope for days of greater equality and prosperity for all remain possible through continued dedication to the principles of equal justice, inclusion, and respect for basic human dignity. And whereas in June 2020, the Pierce County Council adopted Resolution Number 2020-43, which recognized the diverse communities of Pierce County, the factors leading to systemic racism, and the principle that the rights of every citizen are diminished when the rights of one citizen are threatened. And whereas the Pierce County Council also adopted ordinance Number 2023-2, which added the publication of a countywide equity index as a requirement of the Finance Department, as well as a requirement to provide an equity note for all proposed legislation that is submitted to this council. And whereas the Pierce County residents are encouraged to participate in the many Martin Luther King Junior Day celebrations throughout their communities, and a list of those events can be found at piercecountywa.gov/council, including Tacoma's annual MLK Day Birthday Celebration on January 15th at the Tacoma Convention Center, starting at 10:00 AM. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this ninth day of January 2024 by the Pierce County Council that we commemorate the life and work of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and urge all citizens to champion his ideals of equality and justice, because injustice anywhere is a threat to injustice everywhere. Let's give them a round of applause. Ms. Akoff, again, we invited you here not only because you're very able leadership on behalf of our congressman and the work you do on behalf of the people of the 6th Congressional District, but you are the alumni esteemed guest speaker at the MLK Day Celebration that UW Tacoma will be hosting on Monday morning before the Tacoma Celebration. And that's how many of us will start our morning together. So we invited you here because of your leadership and to recognize that, and we would love to hear from you.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. I do have a couple of words that I'd love to share. Good afternoon, council. Thank you for allowing me to join you all today. It's wonderful to see so many familiar faces and to be here with you to celebrate and honor the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Today is a special day here in Pierce County. This proclamation allows me to reflect on the moments that have impacted my life and the memories that will impact generations to come. It was April 3rd, 1968, that Dr. King was in Memphis to support a strike by garbage workers. And on that night, he visited the Mason Temple. That night, he said, "I have been to the mountaintop," he said, "I have seen the promised land." And he also said, "I may not get there with you." It would be his final sermon. And as I read that sermon over the weekend, I was struck by the interplay of challenge and hope, the admission and understanding that as a nation, we have yet to truly form that perfect union. But as a county and as a nation, we must continue to constantly strive to form a more perfect union. In that sermon, he said some tough things. He said, "The world is all messed up," and that "the nation is sick. Trouble is in the land. Confusion is all around. But I know somehow that only when it is dark enough can you see the stars." One only needs to find, to spend a few minutes watching the cable news to really learn that that still resonates today. My friends, we have many challenges. We see substantial poverty and inequality in our nation, and there's over 553,000 Americans who are homeless on any given night. Yet, there is still some hope. So there is hope when the Pierce County Council members honor Martin Luther King. So thank you for having me today, and it's rooms like today that reignite my flame in faith and optimism. Thank you again for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Akoff. We're so grateful to have you here. I'm looking forward to hearing your further remarks and reflections Monday morning. Let me open this up to my colleagues to see what further remarks they have before we invite you up here to take a photo with us. Other council members, any remarks? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Akoff, for reminding us of some of the more powerful words that came out of some of the writings that we don't often get quoted. I love the "I Have a Dream" speech, but he had so much more to say. So thank you. I just want to reflect on where we are now and where we're going. And while this council has done a tremendous amount of work in the last couple of years around helping the county push towards equity and acknowledging some of the things, we still have work to do. And I know that we're committed to kind of continuing to work on some of the programs that we put forward, looking at how we're using the equity note when we're talking about decision-making. Because if we really want to address systemic racism, we have to look at the systems, it's right there in the word, that are allowing racism to exist, especially in agencies of government, unfortunately. So I think that we've taken those first bold steps, and we just need to keep the path and keep the course and commit to continuing the work. I also want to do a shout out to Lakewood, who will be doing, I think it's their third annual video presentation they do on MLK Day, and they do it because they started it during the pandemic, and it's been successful this year. I believe they are pulling students from their different high schools to do their perspectives of what MLK Day means to them, and they kind of put them out over the course of the day. And you can see more information on their website. And it's Lakewood in Washington State, not Lakewood in Colorado. If you just type in Lakewood, you go to Colorado, they must pay for it. I don't know. But thank you for being here and for your words. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Courtney, thank you for your words. Councilmember Hitchens said much of what I wanted to say, but just to take that moment of not just sharing the words, but kind of the reflection behind them and challenging us, you know, once a year for us to sit down, we should use more than once a year, but to reflect on the words and the service that we hear from Martin Luther King Jr. Councilmember Hitchens is right. We still have a lot of work to do, particularly within government. And every day, we hope to make a step forward. Some days, it doesn't feel like we're getting that full tread. And we need to make sure that we are working on moving forward every day at making our systems of government more just and more equitable. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Dinson.
Yes, thank you. I concur with the words of my colleagues. But one of the things that you talked about, Ms. Akoff, really struck me, and I don't know that I'm going to be able to describe, I have to think about this, but when you really talked about Martin Luther King stressing that we need to continue, and you stressing as well, that we need to continue to strive to form a more perfect union. That really struck me during these times where we seem to be getting more and more divided. And, you know, Dr. King was really so prophetic, talking about how, you know, we need to come together and how we're stronger together, and it's a more loving and beautiful and positive place for everyone when, again, we can come together. And I think his dream is that we do come together and work together for the betterment of all. And I needed to give that some more thought, but those were some words that I hadn't heard in a while. And I really appreciated that in today's context of everyone kind of in their own camps. And what we need to do is come together because it's going to benefit all of us when we're working to get to know one another and make sure we're all taken care of. Thank you.
In closing, Ms. Akoff, in addition to, I'm looking forward to hearing you on Monday morning, you know, I just really appreciate you reminding us that MLK Day is just not another day off. It's just not another local, state, federal holiday. It's a day to challenge our thinking and to, you know, so many folks have called MLK Day, you know, a day of service, which we're trying to use the resources of the Office of the County Council, again at piercecountywa.gov/council, to help promote many of the celebrations where people can come and reflect and learn and challenge us, but also some mini-service opportunities that are going on throughout the county where people can make it a day on, not just a day off. So looking forward to that. And also, in your remarks, you helped remind us that one of the things that Dr. King really fought for was against poverty. Certainly, at the root of poverty is systemic racism. And those two issues are inextricably linked, and we can't look at one without the other. So many folks try to think of just the flowery things that Dr. King tends to get known for, some of the unity statements, and he's famous for a lot of prophetic statements and unity statements. He's also famous for challenging us and challenging us hard to think He's also famous for challenging us and challenging us hard to think about poverty and what drives poverty in this country, and there's a lot of hard work we have to do locally and as a nation to overcome that. So thank you, and we would love to welcome you up here to take a photo with us.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Councilmember Kruever for a motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move R 2024-100.
It's been properly moved and signed to adopt Resolution 2024-100. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Yes, also, Mr. Chair, I thought the proposal was moved from the dissent.
It was, thank you. I'll deal with that one next. Thank you for reminding me. We'll bring that one next, right after this.
Proposal Number R 2024-100, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the selection of two at-large members, Charles Dingsing and Tanisha Lyons, to the Performance Audit Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vedder, to brief the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. By charter, the County Council administers a performance audit program to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of county government. To carry out this work, the council established and code the Performance Audit Committee, which is composed of three council members, the county executive or designee, and two at-large members selected by the committee and confirmed by resolution of the council. These at-large members may serve up to two four-year terms. With the conclusion of the term of Dick Murray and the resignation of Josh Smith, both at-large applications are vacant. These vacancies were advertised to the general public via press release and social media. The committee received 11 applications. A subcommittee consisting of Committee Chair Marty Campbell, Vice Chair Amy Kruever, Committee Member Gary Robinson, and myself reviewed the applications and interviewed the candidates. This subcommittee narrowed the applicants down to three finalists who are interviewed by the full Performance Audit Committee at its December 6th meeting. As a result of those interviews, the committee selected Tanisha Lyons and Charles Dising to refer to the full council for confirmation.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Vedder? I don't see any. So we're going to open, and we don't have the appointees here, this is outside of our normal appointment process because the council actually makes these appointments. So we don't have the appointees present, right, Mr. Winesbury?
No, I don't see them.
Okay, thank you. I know the subcommittee of the Performance Audit Committee took this really seriously and is making this proposal to the full council, and seeing no questions from council members at this time, we will open this up for a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to provide comment on this appointment of two members to the Performance Audit Committee, please come to the podium, say your name for the record. Not seeing any other members of the public here, Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on Proposal Number R 2024-100, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no further hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to acknowledge and thank my colleagues. I was the only person on the Performance Audit Committee that did not do the full interview, and they brought really good candidates before me to look at and interview, and then we had really good conversations as they came before Performance Audit to discuss, you know, the whys and the hows and how they're going to engage with us, and I think that they will be wonderful assets to the work of the Performance Audit. So thank you, Chair Campbell and Vice Chair Kruever for that work ahead of time, and Mr. Robinson, if you're randomly listening, thank you, and thank you, Seth. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I add my gratitude to the Performance Audit Committee led by Vice Chair Campbell, who chairs that committee for us, and this committee does really important work to help us look inward and how we can use resources best and be most effective, so thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2024-100?
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kruever.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Coming back to the resolution that we pulled from our consent agenda, we have Resolution 2024-103 before us. Councilmember Morell for a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I move for consideration Resolution 2024-103.
It's been properly moved and signed that we adopt Resolution 2024-103. Madam Clerk, please read the title into the record.
Proposal Number R 2024-103, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of three new members, Russell Odell, Jonathan Garcia, and Michael Coza to the Pierce County Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee.
Thank you. So looking into our Zoom room, we have a couple, at least a couple of these members here. Thank you for making time to be with us, and you're interested in serving in this way. We'd like to call on you to briefly introduce yourself, so please introduce yourself and share briefly why you wish to serve, and we'll then see if there's any council questions. So let's go ahead and start with you, Russell.
Mr. Chair, my name is Russell Odell. I am a land use attorney, and in my professional experience, I've come across and dealt with a lot of the issues that the advisory council will be advising on, and so that was one of the reasons that I volunteered to serve. The other reason is I recently moved to the Tacoma area, and so I wanted to get involved in local participation.
Thank you for making yourself available, Mr. Odell. Jonathan Garcia, thank you for being with us and your interest. Can we ask you to introduce yourself, please?
Hello, how's it going? Sorry, they're having a little technical difficulties. I'm Jonathan Garcia. I'm looking forward to assisting in whatever way I can, kind of bringing from the mindset of a business background. Work in property management, work in real estate, and also own a couple of small businesses, but also work with Tacoma Pierce County Association of Realtors under a couple of the boards, just basically looking to give back, be a part of the community, and see what perspectives I can offer.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you for being here and introducing yourself and your willingness to serve. Does any member of council have any questions for these appointees before we open this up for a public hearing? We'll start with Vice Chair Campbell.
Just a brief question. Heard a little bit about your backgrounds, and I heard a lot about, you know, property or land and that, but I do believe we're looking at the Flood Control Zone District, and so what parts of that interest you most, and what might you be looking to bring specifically to the flood control area?
Mr. Odell, can we start with you?
Sure. So with flood control, I mean, you know, in my professional, I deal with land use, and you know, I see governments and investors and just the general public trying to develop land that maybe shouldn't be developed because it's in a flood zone. And so being smart about how we control flooding is helpful for the general public. It helps with safety, and I was hoping to bring some of my expertise in this area to the advisory committee. The other thing that the new flood control plan is going to be starting to look at is urban flooding and tidal flooding. And so I don't have much experience with that because those aren't things that are typically regulated, and so I'm interested in what sort of science will be brought to bear to alleviate those problems.
Thank you for that, for those thoughts, Mr. Odell. Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, no, when it comes to, when it comes to the flood experiences, as far as what the committee can offer, definitely is a new environment for me. I don't have an expertise. The position that I was looking at joining on as is a, kind of from the business perspective. So they mentioned when I interviewed for that position and had gone through the process that a business mindset, just how a business would see it, is an important aspect, and I do really find it, just like the last gentleman just said, the concept of talking about maybe some things aren't such a good idea, some things are, having a flexibility and open mind and learning about the process is really how I approach things, and you have to have an open perspective, but also kind of a long-term linear thought process when you look at development, we look at how you approach the entire process and phase of each item. Pretty much the gist of it.
Thank you for those thoughts. Any other members have any other questions before we open this up for a public hearing? I don't see any. So this is a public hearing on appointment of three members to the Pierce County Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee. There's no members of the public in council chambers, so we'll move to the Zoom room. Mr. Winesbury.
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on Proposal Number R 2024-103, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just want to acknowledge and appreciate the three new members moving forward. Being on this committee is both technical and challenging with dealing with urban, riverine, and coastal flooding that we are challenged with today, protecting private property and also protecting public infrastructure, and then trying to understand Mother Nature is a challenging aspect, but I think this committee will work together to try and make sense of some of the challenges, there again, that we have with flooding in Pierce County. And so I'm looking forward to listening to the discussions and the information that will come forward to the Board of Supervisors is vital to us making decisions on what to do with the tax dollars that we have collected to do this work. So thank you all, and look forward to, there again, a good discussion in 2024. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I want to join Councilmember Morell in thanking all the applicants on this. Flood Control in Pierce County is pretty unique. When you look at the elevation of Pierce County from sea level to 14,000 feet, we have the highest elevation change of any county in the United States, and we, some counties deal with maybe some river flooding or that, but we have glacial melt, river flooding, urban flooding, shoreline issues, higher floods along our shorelines, King Tides, and so we deal with all the issues in one county, and perhaps one of the most complex counties when it comes to what we have to address with flooding. The accelerated melting of glaciers has led to more silt being released that are clogging more of our river systems that are going to require a new look at the way that we're doing things because clearly what we've been doing hasn't worked because we're continuing to get flooding, and so we need to really appreciate the thinking that we have coming on board to some pretty big challenges that we have before us. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. I'll just conclude, and thank you for volunteering to serve in this advisory capacity. I will, I used to serve on this advisory committee, and I can say on both sides of the dais now that the Board of Supervisors for the Flood Control Zone District and the County Council, who happen to be one and the same, really do take seriously the advice and counsel of the advisory committee, that the issues are so complex as have been indicated, and we invest a significant amount of resources to try to address this, and so your work is taken very, very seriously. So thank you for volunteering. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2024-103?
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kruever.
Aye.
And Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to Proposal Number R 2024-101. Councilmember Kruever for a motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Proposal R 2024-101 for consideration.
It's been properly moved and signed that we adopt Resolution 2024-101. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal Number R 2024-101, a resolution of the Pierce County Council authorizing the Pierce County Executive to execute an interlocal agreement between the town of Eatonville and Pierce County for prosecution, defense, probation, and court services, and requesting that the Finance Department post said agreement on the county's dedicated interlocal agreements webpage.
Thank you. Liz Long, to brief the council.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So the proposal before you, as stated in the title, would authorize the executive to execute an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the town of Eatonville for the provision of prosecution, defense, probation, and district court services. This is an agreement authorized by RCW, or Chapter 3934 RCW, which is the Interlocal Cooperation Act. The term of this agreement is three years, commencing on January 1st of 2024. Pursuant to the terms of the agreement, the county agrees to provide to the town of Eatonville the following services, so court services, that's district court services, which includes filing, processing, adjudication, and penalty enforcement of all town cases filed during the term of the agreement in Pierce County District Court. Prosecution services, which includes reviewing, filing, and prosecuting state criminal traffic and non-traffic misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor cases that occur within the town limits. It also includes criminal defense and qualifying cases, probation services, interpreter services, and other services necessary for the handling and disposition of town criminal cases filed in district court during the term of the agreement. In exchange, the town of Eatonville agrees to provide the following compensation to Pierce County. The first year, so 2024, the town will pay the total sum of $146,250 to the county in four installments. The two following subsequent years, the town would pay the county that base fee plus 2.5%. So for 2025, that would be $149,906, and for the year 2026, the total would be $153,654. This is a resolution that came to the council from the executive district court, the prosecuting attorney, and assigned council, which you don't see very often. This did not have a committee hearing, given the time-sensitive nature, so it is coming to the council for your first reading. to the council for your first review and final decision today. And I will note that we have Lana Wyman, the Chief of Staff from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office here in chambers, to answer any questions you might have. And I also note that Alisa Hill from District Court is with us on Zoom as well. So, if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so. Thank you.
Does the Prosecutor's Office, I don't see Ms. Hill anymore in the Zoom room. Okay, yeah, I think I saw her drop off, but we do have the Prosecutor's Office represented by the Chief of Staff here. Do you have anything to add on behalf of the prosecutor?
No, anything to add, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman. Any council members have any questions for any of the department staff or Ms. Long? We'll start with Counselmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. And I got one of my questions answered earlier today that this is not an up-to-contract, that this is a service that's being paid for. So, I guess my question was around what happens if we go over if there are a whole bunch of cases that are happening that ramp up the need and we're seeing greater demand on our, on the time of our different departments that are being called out in this.
Thank you. I can answer that. What we did, we worked with the Finance Department and all three departments will be involved in the contract. And we looked at past years' worth of history of what the casework was, both infraction, you know, the civil work, the infraction work, the prosecution work. And we did a true cost recovery model of, for example, the Prosecutor's Office, it would represent about 1% of our total cases if we took on Eatonville based on their average over several years. That doesn't look like it's changed much, their average. It's around 50 to 60 criminal cases a year of what they file. And then we just built in an approximation of 2.5% increase in expenses over the course of the next couple of years. So, the contract would end, it's a three-year contract starting 2024, and we would then look at costs again later and renew a contract based on those estimates and the workload that would come to our county.
Okay. Thank you. And I have a second question, but can you say your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Lana Wyman, Chief of Staff for the Prosecutor's Office.
Perfect. My second question is around transportation from Eatonville, and I didn't see that called out, but I know that if they're working with some of our agencies here or even like probation, is there, how do they get here? Is that on them?
It's on them, like it would be for any of our unincorporated Pierce County cases that we handle and infractions and stuff. So, there wasn't anything built into that because it's not covered for anything else that the district court handles.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Wyman, I want to make sure we heard correctly. I think in the laundry list of services for, you said you looked at experience over the last three years when looking at the caseload and looking at what the compensation should be to provide these services. You said the word civil in there. I want to make sure, are we providing civil?
Their infractions are civil work and there can be, this is where Ms. Hill would help, but I think they have small claims, you know, they can have that. So, we're taking on all, the court's taking on all court services for Eatonville. They used to have a contract with Bonny Lake Municipal Court, so they're taking that over. The prosecution services, we obviously aren't involved in the civil, we don't handle infractions.
We're not going to be there.
So, that's why the language is a little different when it comes to prosecution services.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Counselmember Kruber?
Thank you, Chair. I just, what was it you said? How many cases was that? For example, last year it was, or the last year that we had information on was about 55 criminal cases. Fifty-five? For a year. In Eatonville? Yeah, I know. That's how many were filed, so there'd be more referrals than that, but that's how many cases were filed. So, we just looked at what are our average filings across that same time period and adding Eatonville to the batch, what percentage does that take up of our workload? And for our Prosecutor's Office, about 1%. Interesting. Of what we handle normally. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Wyman, one of the things this council is really interested in is making sure that every community member has access to the same, access to justice, no matter where you are. So, those that have access to therapeutic courts, which isn't everybody.
Yeah.
Not every court, not every court-limited jurisdiction has a therapeutic court program, as you well know. Does this partnership with Eatonville allow those community members in Eatonville who might be picked up for, say, a drug crime or another crime that, where they may be a candidate for a therapeutic court program?
Yeah.
To correct their behavior and better their life? Does this improve their ability to participate in a diversion program and a therapeutic court program than otherwise?
Yes, it does because they will be, those cases will be treated, those people will be treated just the same as every other unincorporated Pierce County. And we also, for years, have had Edgewood. We do cases for Edgewood. So, they would be, they would have access to the same services that any other Pierce County criminal defendant in district court would have.
But had we not do this, they would not have that same access to justice?
That's correct.
One of the many reasons to do this and to figure out how to, there's different ways to bring other communities along and have access to, say, our therapeutic court programs and services. I think it's one of the many benefits of this partnership in addition to helping Eatonville figure out how to deliver this basic, these basic public safety services in a small community that otherwise could not afford to do so. Thank you for making yourself available.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other questions by council, we will open this up for a public hearing. There's still no members of the public physically here in council chambers. So, Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room wishing to provide comment?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on proposal number R2024-101, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Well, thank you to the many hands that worked with the town of Eatonville to prepare this agreement and see a way for us to be compensated for the work fairly so that we're not carrying an undue burden, but using the strength of the economies of scale of the delivery of public services to be able to deliver these services to the people of Eatonville. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2024-101?
Counselmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Counselmember Morell.
Aye.
Counselmember Campbell.
Aye.
Counselmember Kruber.
Aye.
Counselmember Denson.
Aye.
Counselmember Herrera.
Aye.
And Counselmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That does bring us to Section 10, Community Forum. Community Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any topic that is of significance to or affecting Pierce County government and that did not appear on today's agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. We ask you to state your name if you would like it on the record and to address all comments to the chair. We'll start with those that are in chambers, which there are none physically here in chambers. So, we'll turn to our Zoom room. Mr. Winesbury?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide public comment, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And we have one hand this time. Please state your name for the record. First name's Jesse.
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Jessica Sapman.
We can hear you, Jessica.
Okay, thank you. I am mindful of my three-minute time limit, so I have typed this out. My name is Jessica Sapman. I've been a member of the Puyallup community for almost 30 years. I work in the federal programs for Puyallup School District, but most importantly, I am a mother who is speaking today on behalf of my neighborhood and of the daycare in our neighborhood that is near Carson Elementary School on a matter of safety and code enforcement that was denied. Upon entering our neighborhood, there is a blind S-curve that is completely dark and overgrown. Cars are parked in an overgrown brush that is private property and a curb on many days will have drug deals going on. On November 29th, while driving home from school, my son was ambushed by a man that was hiding in a car with a woman. The man jumped out of his car and ran up to my son and put a gun to his head while the woman videoed. Two women were walking their dog and witnessed this happen. My son put his truck in reverse and took off backwards towards Carson Elementary, where he was chased at high speed and shot at seven times. My son drove to Brown Bear Car Wash in Graham to hide in a stall while he waited for the deputy to arrive. My son was uninjured physically. His truck sustained one bullet hole, but mentally he is suffering, as our family and our neighbors are as well. Detective Medina was assigned to the case but has not returned any of our calls since December 12th. The suspect is known in our neighborhood for the past five years and frequents a drug home in our neighborhood, continues to wander around nightly. There have been no arrests. The neighborhood feels unsupported and unsafe. Just yesterday, I was driving home from work, following a school bus into our neighborhood. I saw a car parked in the overgrown brush that I'm speaking of, presumably doing drugs or dealing drugs. If the detective is no longer working on the case, although it is still open, then all of us citizens of the neighborhood, all we can do is advocate for this brush to be cut down and lighting to be installed for our safety. Our neighborhood strongly feels that this will eliminate or at least deter drug dealing in this area. My husband and I tried to email and Facebook message the owner of the brush to offer to help pay or cut down the brush with no response. Amy Kruber was quick to respond and have the county remove the outer edges of the brush and do what she could, and I thank you for that, Councilwoman Kruber, Kruber, excuse me. Our code enforcement was denied because the brush is Scotch broom and the denial states that it is not within 100 feet of the dwelling and that all further code enforcements will be denied, which scares us. We are asking you, as city council members, to consider the safety of all that live in our neighborhood. Every day, we must drive by this group of people wandering our neighborhood, knowing that one of them attempted to murder my son for some reason. If nothing is going to be done about that, then please consider helping us by authorizing special permission for this area to be cleaned and lit up. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you for being with us. We're going to let everyone have an opportunity to speak and then we'll wrap up comments here. Anyone else, Mr. Winesbury?
I see no other hands at this time, Chair.
No further hands for Community Forum. We'll close Community Forum, bring it back to the council. Jessica, thank you for making time to be with us and express your really significant community safety concerns. You absolutely deserve to be safe and feel safe in your neighborhood and we take your concerns very seriously. It's unclear to me, listening to you, who your council member is, if it's Counselmember Morell or Herrera, based on what I heard, but would urge you to please email in and sounds like Counselmember Kruber also heard from you, so we would, if we could get your contact information, then the council member that represents you can work with our staff and continue to work with the Executive's Office about how we can, and the Sheriff's Department, about what we can do to take some next steps to improve community safety with you and for you. So, if you could, if you could write in one more time and ensure we have your contact information, we'll have the council member's office, who represents you properly, follow up. Thank you, Jessica. We're at other business and announcements. Is there any other business or announcements from council members? Counselmember Kruber?
Thank you, Chair. I just would like to relate that Ms. Sapman is my constituent and we have had conversations. And this could be actually a good case study to look at, to find out what things we can do or can't do in servicing our constituents to help them feel safe in their neighborhoods. This is a very frightening incident and we shouldn't have to live like that.
Thank you. I'm sorry for, I heard Puyallup, so.
It is a Puyallup address, but it's on the other side and it's in my area.
Thank you for that and thank you for restarting the constituent casework and working through the issue. Appreciate it. I'm certain Counselmember Kruber will help bring to the table where the opportunities are for us to improve in the legislative branch or in the delivery of service at the executive branch level. So, thank you. Any other business or announcements by other council members? Not seeing any. Is there any other business or announcements by staff?
Not today, thank you.
With no further business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned.